And it's my prayer that you come with a, uh, which I'm an open mind and an open Bible as we go through these weeks of studying together. So we can have our appreciation, what it really means to surrender your life to Jesus Christ. Uh, I always want to open up by saying that if you are not a Christian, if you're not a child of God, one of the things that God wants you to do is to surrender your life. If you have not yet obeyed the gospel of Jesus Christ, that lesson tonight, uh, is with you in mind as well. That you will make a decision even on tonight to say, I want to give my life to Jesus the Christ. And, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, uh, that men and women everywhere, because God so loved the world. That he gave his own begotten son, that whoever believe in him should not perish, have everlasting life. And we want to come with to, to the approach of saying, God, I'm ready to surrender. So even on tonight, if you are not a Christian, if you're, if you have not obeyed the gospel of Jesus Christ, if you're not, uh, obey God and pardon of your sins, we're asking you even tonight to do that. And we will stand that invitation to you, uh, before the night is over. However, if you're, you are already a Christian, you're a child of God, but you yourself, um, have not yet really surrendered yet. We're going to talk about that tonight. Uh, you yourself need to surrender tonight to the wheel and to the way of the all mighty God. Uh, tonight, as we talk about surrender, uh, I gave us a definition on Sunday. That I believe there should be a working definition, uh, throughout this whole series, and that is surrendering is exchanging, uh, or forfeiting one's own will, right? For, uh, for the will of God. So in other words, I kill my will. And in killing my will, I exchange it for the will of God. Now that's a challenge tonight, because for many of us, um, sometimes we want to stay in our own will. We want to stay in our own, own way of doing things. But I read somewhere, there is a way that's seeming right unto a man, but in other, other ways of death. And so what we're talking about tonight, when I was referencing surrendering, I'm talking about individuals exchanging their will. Uh, and it get, and forfeiting their will and exchanging it for the will of God. Now, if you will, turn with me to first Kings chapter 20. And, uh, I wanna, I wanna give us a principle here. I believe it's something that we can look at. And, uh, I'll be reading this from the, from the C E V version of the word of God. For those who are visiting with us. Uh, I've asked the congregation, the Northwest Church to, we're studying this whole mo-, uh, year. We'll be studying this whole year from the C E V version and other translations, but primarily the C E V version of the word of God. And I want us to, I want to read, I want to start there in first Kings chapter 20. And I want to read verses, uh, one through nine from the C E V version. And I want to pull out a principle that we can see and understand and understand exactly what, what it is. So, um, watch this, first Kings chapter 20, verses one through, through nine. Watch what the Bible says. King Benadiah of Syria called his army together. He was joined by thirty-two other kings with their horses and chariots. And together they marched to Samaria and attacked. Benadiah said to messenger to tell King Ahab of Israel. Ahab give me, watch this, your silver and gold, your wives and your strongest sons. Your majesty Ahab replied, everything I have is yours, including me. Later Benadiah sent another messenger to, to say to Ahab. I've already told you to give me your silver and your gold, your wives and your children. But tomorrow at this time, I will send my officials into your city. To search your palace and the houses of your officials. They will take everything else that you want. Ahab called a meeting with the leaders of Israel and said, Benadiah is causing real trouble. He told me to give him my wives and my children, as well as my silver and gold. And I agree, don't listen to him, they answered. You don't have to do what he says. So Ahab sent someone to tell Benadiah, your majesty, I give you my silver and gold, and even my wives and children. But I won't let you have anything else. Now, now I, I want to show you the principle here. You have two kings. One, one of Syria, so one of Israel. And, uh, Syria, the king, literally ambushed the king of Israel, Ahab. And he surrounds him. And notice what he tells him. He says, listen, I'm going to seize everything you have. I want your possessions. I want your, 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 your wives. I want your strongest son. And I want you to surrender. I need you to give it up. And the Bible says, King Ahab said, listen, I will surrender. And you can have everything, including me. I, I want you to notice something. Would it, would it be, it's interesting to me, what if the people of God had the same mentality when it came to our king? If it can't, if when it comes to Jesus being Lord and Savior over our lives. And when God has asked us to surrender, what if we had the same mentality? That God, you can have whatever you want. Whatever I got, God, is already yours. I surrender. However, what I think is very interesting, that after King Ahab decided to surrender. He went to some other people and they said, you out of your mind. And then notice what he said. He said, now tell the king, I know what I said. But he can have everything. He can have my children. He can have my wife. He can even have my gold and my silver. But he can't have anything else. I wanted to ask him what else there is to give. Anyway, he said, what, what else? You can't have anything else. And it's interesting that what we do as the people of God, that we don't fully surrender. But we have heartily surrender. That we'll say, God, you can have this, you can have this, but God, this over here, you can't have that. We have not unconditionally surrendered to God. And although you are child of God tonight, and although you are Christian, although you obeyed the gospel some years ago. And amen, you yielded your life to Jesus, there are other areas in your own life that you have not yet surrendered yet. And God is asking you to surrender your whole heart to him. God does not want part of us. God wants every bit of us. He don't want you partially to surrender. But he wants you and I to surrender our lives to Jesus Christ. Isn't it interesting? That we will give God and surrender to God what we want. Y'all have heard me say this before. Let me say it again. Because it fits right through in here, that one of the things we do sometimes, and one thing I used to do, I, I used to say, God, uh, uh, more or less of me, uh, and more of God, right? I, I, y'all have heard me say that before. I used to use my prayer, more less of me and more of God. But as I've grown to learn, that is an incorrect prayer. It should not be less of me and more of God. It should be none of me and all of God. Because when you say less of me and more of God, there is some parts of you, you still want to hold on to. Not fully surrender, but when you fully surrender to God, your mentality is, God, whatever you want, I do, I surrender. It, it means, God, when I pray to you and I ask God for you to do some stuff in my life. And when I say, God, not as my will, but your will be done, I really mean it. But sometimes when we pray that prayer and we urinate that prayer, we be wanting our will to be God's will. Oh, Lord Jesus. And so tonight, as, as we set the foundation of surrendering. I, I want you to think about areas in your own life. Not, not in your neighbor, not your brother, not yourself, but your own life. Areas in your life that you have not yet surrendered. What area in your life have you said, God, you can have this, but you can't have that? And you know, it's interesting to me, because what I've learned as a preacher and as a Christian, that what we do is we'll try to give God ninety-five percent. And hold on to the other five percent that belong to us. No, God said, I want all of you. And so what we make up for it, we'll say, God, I'm gonna do all of this. And if I do all of this, you overlook the five percent. God says, I don't work like that. God says, what I want, I want you. Because I know if I have you, I got everything else. Now, now go with me real quickly, uh, to Romans fourteen. Romans fourteen, uh, and I want to read verses eight through nine. Romans fourteen and verses eight through nine. And I'll be reading from the New Living on this particular passage. New Living, I liked how the New Living reads it, New Living translation of the word of God. Now I need you to know, in Romans fourteen, if you look at context, amen, you will notice in Romans fourteen, they are arguing over Christian liberties. Uh, some Christians believe that they couldn't eat meat, others believe they could. And it's causing some type of dysfunction among the people of God. And I want you to know that he, he used this, 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 uh, language of lordship here. And that's why I want to point out, he uses language of lordship that we cannot dismiss. Notice what it says in Romans chapter fourteen, uh, verses eight through nine, the New Living. It says, if we live, it's to honor the Lord, on the line of the word Lord. And if we die, it's to honor the Lord. So whether we live or die, we belong to the Lord. Christ died and arose again for this very person to be Lord, both of the living and of the dead. Let me read that one more time. Uh, notice, uh, what I study till, whenever you study scripture. Whenever there is a word that is repeated over and over, that's a good, uh, that is a good time for you to take notice. Because there's a point that the author is trying to get across. When a, or a particular word is repeated over and over. But notice what it says, if we live, it's to honor the Lord. So if we're, if we're live, our whole purpose of living. And in context, I'm talking about whether you eat meat or not eat meat. Your whole purpose is to honor the Lord. Whether you observe special days or not observe special days, your purpose is to honor the Lord. It is, whether you're dead or alive, he says, all of it is for perfect. God died, Jesus died for you, so he can possess you. Ownership. The word Lord, uh, in the Old Testament, the Hebrew word Lord, when you see all caps, that word Lord is Yahweh. Is Jehovah, right? Um, that's why in the book of Genesis, you read Lord God. Now I need you to understand what a Lord is. A Lord suggests that he has full authority over your life. Did you get that? It, it, it literally means that the Lord, he's the one who rules over you, right? Now, now I know in our American culture, we use the word Lord loosely. And we say, Lord God or Lord Jesus, right? However, many of us, child of God, we really don't understand the concept of Lord. Because when he's lording over you, it literally means you don't do anything without him. Because he's your Lord. I hope that's making sense to you. That in, that, that I'm, I, I struggle sometimes, uh, in the body of Christ, when we obeyed the gospel. We were translated into the kingdom of God, dear son. Now, with that being said, let me help us to understand that we are a part of a kingdom. A kingdom. Y'all under, y'all, y'all remember, y'all write that down if you're taking notes. Kingdom. You and I are part of a kingdom, right? We are citizens who live in this, in this world, but we are not a part of this world. We're pilgrims just passing through. We are citizens of the kingdom of God. But this is what I know, I understand why, uh, in America. Why we struggle with this concept of kingdom. I understand why. Because in America, we was born in a democracy. And because we was born in a democracy, it's hard for us to understand kingdom. I, I, I want to suggest that the word kingdom is not just a word, but it's, it was a lifestyle for the believers. Because they understood kingdom and not democracy. What do you mean preacher? Here, here it is. When you study scripture in the New Testament. What you are studying, those believers understood this concept of kingdom. Now, now when we, when we get done tonight, I want y'all to go study kingdom. Because when you understand kingdom, you will be able to appreciate this thing called kingdom. And the reason we don't understand it and we don't appreciate it, because we was not born in a kingdom, we was born in a democracy. And there's a difference. So remember, as we study scripture, remember, a text came in now what it never meant then. And one of the things I keep pushing with the Northwest Church, when you study scripture, don't look at it from an American lenses. Look at it from a worldview of the original writer. And when they read scripture, they understood it as kingdom. Now, if, if I was standing before you, y'all could talk back to me, I would ask you, what's the difference between a democracy and a kingdom? Right? See, a democracy is where the people vote, people in. They vote, whoever they want in, they vote every eight, four years, every eight years. They vote, right? In a kingdom, a kingdom don't work like that. Amen. A kingdom is through royal, uh, family lineage. Um, if you think about Norway, Norway is a kingdom. They don't have a president, right? The, it's the concept of kingdom is different. Give me a, give me an example. Um, the king, in a kingdom, a king owns everything. He, he possesses everything in the kingdom. He, he, uh, he owns the land. He own whatever, the food, whatever there is in the kingdom, the king's own. But he allows the citizens to be a steward of the very thing he owns. Okay, y'all missed it. It's different than a democracy. A democracy, you get to vote people in. In a democracy, you get to, to, to pay for your land and try to own your land. You get to do all that. But in a kingdom, the king never allows you to own his land. Or to take possession of, of his houses. He only allows you to be a steward over the very thing that he owns. Well, since we as the people of God, we are a kingdom. He's our king. He rules and he reigns over us. And since he rules and since he reigns over us, guess what? You don't own anything. He only allows you and I to be stewards of the very thing that he owns. In a kingdom, when a, when, when subjects, when they pray over their food, they thank God for the king for allowing him to eat, they, his food, the king's food. Oh my God. See, I want you to understand, that's why when you talk about kingdom, kingdom is a different type of lifestyle. But too many Christians, we want kingdom blessings, but we don't want to abide by the kingdom of blessings. I think I told you this once before. Uh, a long time ago, uh, the subjects believe in a kingdom that the king's, the king's arm was from his pinky finger to his elbow. And they believed it was about twelve inches. They believe that the pinky finger to his elbow from the king was about twelve inches. That's why today they call it a ruler. They call it a ruler because they believe, because the king owns everything. And because they believe his pinky to his, to his elbow was twelve inches, they call it a ruler. That's why today we walk around here with a ruler. Because they understood the concept of kingdom. And so what would it look like if God's people would submit themselves to the king? And allow him to rule and to reign over us. Now this is, this is why I've come to the conclusion for believing. I come to the conclusion, the reason that we are afraid to surrender. Is because number one, loss of control. What you think about that? The reason, the thing, the thing that you haven't surrendered yet to God, the reason you have not yet surrendered it to God, is because you don't control it. And the very thing that you can't control, you afraid if you surrender, you, you lack control and you do. So what happens is, we don't surrender fully because of lack of control. Not only lack of control, but we are afraid that God will take something we want. What you think about that? The reason you don't surrender is because it's lack of control. And you afraid that if you surrender, God gonna take something you want, not realizing that if God take it, you didn't need it anyway. But that's the name of Jesus. So, so there are certain prayers that you don't pray. And you don't ask God his, his side in, because it's something you want. And sometimes he may take something you want that's not good for you anyway. So you afraid to fully surrender, because you think God gonna hold out on you. But don't you know, when you understand God, a God like we serve. Anything that is good for you, he ain't gonna withhold from. Now if you pray something to the king and he doesn't give you what you asked for, it means number one, it wasn't good for you. But that's the name of Jesus. So I want you to see this thing called kingdom, uh, in perspective. Now we may not get done tonight, but it's a good foundation. On a Wednesday night to show us how we need to surrender. Now if you say, I'm a part of the kingdom. The question is, are you ready to surrender tonight? What is it in your own life? That you and I need to surrender? What is it? Now there are three, there are three aspects I want to show us tonight. As it relates to surrender, I'll tell you what it is and we'll try to get to them if we can. Number one, your conversation. Number two, your conduct. Y'all got that? Number one, your conversation. I'm sorry. Number three, your character. Number two, your character. Number three, your conduct. Your conversation, your character, and your conduct. He wants you to surrender all three to him. Say it one more time preacher. I'm a subject. I am a part of the kingdom. But if I'm gonna be a part of his kingdom and get the kingdom blessings, I can't submit only with what I want to submit to, to the king. I gotta have a mentality and an attitude that none of this belong to me anyway. So what do I need to, I need to submit my conversation, my character, and my con- what do you mean by conversation preacher? I'm talking about your speech. Do you not know that when we speak? When we talk to God and we talk to other people about whatever we, we dealing with, no matter what. You can tell whether or not we got kingdom language. See, see, if you spend time long enough with a person, you will know in the conversation, have they spent, have they been speaking enough time with the king? And I'm here to submit to us tonight, that when you truly surrender. You gotta admit, first of all, that you got a problem. You gotta admit, first of all, that you got a problem with submission to the king. And one of the things that we need to submit to, we need to submit our conversation. Now, now let's look at a few scriptures. Ephesians chapter four and verse number twenty-nine. Ephesians chapter four. And verse number twenty-nine, C E V version. Watch this, watch what the Bible says. Uh, stop all your dirty talk. Say the right thing at the right time. Help others by what you say. Y'all got that? Kingdom language. Say it again. Stop all your dirty talk. Say the right thing at the right time. And help others by what you say. Kingdom language. In other words, when I speak. My speech is in such a way, that's gonna build somebody else up. That's kingdom. Why? That's kingdom language. Because when, when I'm speaking. I never want to be someone who's turning others down. Because I'm operating outside of the kingdom system. Kingdom living is that when I speak, I operate in such a way. That's gonna build somebody up. My question to you, when you speak. Have you surrendered your conversation to the king? Lord have mercy. Have, see, 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 this type of teaching is teaching for self inventory purposes. Why? Because what God wants to happen, God wants your life and my life to be aligned with the king. Amen. I, I've told you this before and I'll say it again, that the Bible says that heaven is the kingdom of God, is his footstool, right? And remember what I said about kingdom language. Um, the king's language was so important, that what the king would do. The king was interested in taking over territory. So in kingdoms, in different kingdoms, whether, whatever kingdom you talk, they was interested, uh, in taking over territory. So what they would do. They would send an ambassador, the king would lead the kingdom, but he would send ambassadors. To go to different other places and he, they'll take over the territory. And in taking over the territory, the kingdom, the ambassador rather, would teach the new territory. They were colonized. And they would teach the territory, the people who live there. They would make them surrender. And after they surrender to the ambassador on behalf of the king, they would strip them of their culture. And so what they would do, they would teach the people, the king's language, based on whatever kingdom they came from. They would strip them of it. And they, what I doing? I'm trying to take over the territory. I'm trying to make this particular place, this territory, look and look like the kingdom, right? So, so in fifteen thirty-two, y'all can do your own homework on this, in fifteen thirty-two, Spain was a kingdom. Spain, the king at the time, sent an ambassador to go to Mexico and to invade it, to take it over. When the ambassador came to, to, to Mexico in fifteen thirty-two, what happened? They stripped the people of their language. And the ambassador taught the people the king's language. What was the king's language? It was Spanish. That's why even today, if you go Mexico, the people speak Spanish. Because the ambassador was trying to strip the people from their own culture. Now it's interesting to me, as we talk about kingdom, Jesus model prayer, our Father. Which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. What are you doing, God? I'm sending an ambassador to take over territory. So heaven is the kingdom. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to invade earth with heaven. And so when one obeys the gospel of Jesus Christ, the church becomes an expansion of the kingdom of God. It becomes an expansion. So in other words, I need to strip you from your own culture. There's a way you used to live, God trying to strip you from. There's the way you used to talk your speech, he's trying to strip you from it. Why are you trying to strip me from it? Because I need you to speak like the king. Kingdom language says that whenever I speak, whenever I talk, I'm gonna build up people. Amen. Bless the name of Jesus. Watch this. Matthew chapter fifteen and verse number eleven. Matthew chapter fifteen, verse number eleven. Notice what the Bible says. The Bible says, the food that you put in your mouth doesn't make you unclean or unfit to worship God. The bad words that come out of your mouth are what makes you unclean. What are you, I need you to submit, I need you to submit. What are you, I need you to submit, I need you to submit your conversation. I I need you to ask yourself, how is my conversation in reference in me talking and speaking to other people? How is that? What does that look like? What does that look like? Do I reflect my king? Do I seek to 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 put down or do I seek to build up? Bless the name, but this is a hard word tonight because because we're so used to giving God half of us. We're so used to giving God the side of us that we don't like anyway. Right? There's some stuff about you you don't like about you anyway that you wanna fix and it's easy to do. But what about that stuff that 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 God says I don't like and you holding on to? What about that? I I wanna know your conversation. I wanna know your con- how you, how you dialogue, is it seasoned with salt? Bless the name of Jesus. When you on your job and they talking about folk and they putting down folk, are your, is your conversation a reflection of the king? He says, I want your conversation. I need you to surrender. Watch this. Look at, look at Proverbs, chapter twelve, Proverbs, chapters twelve, verse number eighteen. Proverbs, chapter twelve, verse eighteen, notice what it says. Sharp words cut like a sword, but words of wisdom heal. Say it one more time. Sharp words cut like a sword, but words of wisdom heal. Are you a cutter, cutter, or are you a healer? When I get done talking to you, do I feel cut up or do I feel like a healing has taken place? Do I feel like something different has happened as a result of me dialoguing with you? If I leave the conversation with you feeling all cut up, man, I know that ain't from the king. They ain't, they even kingdom, they ain't even kingdom principles. Amen. The proverb writer says, sharp words, they cut like a sword, but words of wisdom heal. When I in dialogue with you or when I leave the conversation, I ought to be healed. Now, listen to me. There are conversations, there are difficult conversations to have, and sometimes those conversations, they hurt. But listen, if they, if they gotta put your, amen, your your arm back in place, it's gonna hurt to have surgery. It's gonna feel some pain, but it's gonna be healing afterwards. So I don't want you to, there are, there are some conversations that gotta be said, had with other folk. And it shouldn't be the process of having those conversations, oh, not be for the function of hurting, but the healing. When, when Paul told Timothy, preach the word, I need you to preach the word, I need you to reproof, rebuke, and exhort. Every, every sermon can't be exhorting. There are some sermons that gotta be rebuking and reproving. But the pro- the the process of rebuking and reproving is so that you will be healed. So, so the proverb writer said correctly here, sharp words, they cut like a sword, but words of wisdom heal. So I need to ask you, are you a cutter or are you a healer? See, somebody need to, amen, there are husbands and wives, amen, have not surrendered to their king, which is Jesus. And y'all, and y'all talk to each other any type of way. And you need to say, Arthur, tonight, because I'm surrendering to the king, I ain't gonna, I'm not a cutter anymore, I'm a healer. I've learned how to surrender and forfeit my will for the will of God. Because in essence, what I wanna do, God, I wanna please you. So watch this, not only, not only Proverbs, but watch this. Look at Proverbs fifteen and twenty eight. Proverbs fifteen, twenty eight. I want you to watch what it say. It says, good people think before they answer. But the wicked speak evil without even thinking. You see the conversation? Good people or righteous people think before they answer. But the wicked speak evil before, before, without even uh ever thinking. In other words, if you are individual who said, I'm just gonna tell you what's on my mind, man, you not operating in the kingdom. Because kingdom people, before they speak or answer, they think about what's gonna come out they mouth. Bless the name of Jesus. They, they pause and they reflect to see uh what I'm about to say, is it going to bring life or is it gonna bring death? And when I'm speaking, I need to speak in such a way that's gonna bring life and not death. We cannot say we surrendered uh to the Lord our king and still wanna operate on our own, our own, our own fashion of what we wanna do. We can't do it because it ain't a part of the king. So, 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 so what do I need to surrender? I need to surrender my conversation. But not only my conversation, but also, secondly, character. Surrender character. Now, now, what is character? Character is simply the set of qualities that make you who you are. Though, that's character. Your character is the set of qualities that make you you. Amen. Y'all, I hear me say this, the real you is not the person who is even on Bible study tonight. That ain't the real you. The real person ain't the person. Amen. When we worshiping together and corporately and we crying and, that ain't the real you. The real you is when you by yourself and it's you, God, and your thoughts. That's you. That's the real you. And so character is the set of qualities that make you who you are. And if that be true, church, uh, child of God, if that be true, if that is true, what we need to understand is, when we as the subjects, when we look at our king, which is Jesus, and we watch his character, the set of qualities that make him who we, who he is, what you think subjects do? We, we, we pattern ourselves after the king. We look at the king's qualities. And what we do as a result, we pattern ourselves after those qualities. Now, let me show you a list of ungodly qualities and godly qualities. And I, I'm just gonna show you a few tonight uh in reference to character. Uh, ungodly qualities is selfishness, being stingy and stubborn. The ungodly char- characters, qualities. In other words, that those things are stuff that we struggle with, but those things are not, not kingdom living. You don't live there. Y'all got that? It is, it's ungodly qualities are selfishness, stingy, and stubborn. It is when you, is when you, is when you have these particular qualities and in the result of having these things, you live there. That's who you are. Them some things that you don't wanna surrender. Amen. There, there are some people, uh, even in the body of Christ, who have a mentality, I'm a wife, I'm a get mad, you get yours. Selfishness, right? I'm gonna do what I do, right? So it's ungodly qualities, selfishness, stinginess, and stubbornness. However, godly qualities are the opposite. It's selfless, being generous and willing to yield. Let you to get that. So, so watch the different one. Qualities are a set of qualities that make you who you are, based upon who you are. Your character, who you are, is based on the own qualities that you have. Now, the, the ungodly qualities, selfishness, stingy, stubborn. Godly qualities, selfless, generous, willing to yield. It's the opposite of the ungodly qualities. Y'all follow that? Now, now, I wanna show you something just a minute. Notice our king. Our king was not selfish. Ain't you happy that we don't have a selfish king? He wasn't selfish. And if that be true, if we're trying to model after the king, we can't be selfish Christians. I, I pray that God will deliver us and set us free from selfish behavior. Bless the night. See, and if, if during the pandemic, is all the person you thinking about is you, that's selfish behavior. That, that ain't, that ain't kingdom. If, if, if you ain't called and checked on nobody, if you ain't, you wanna call them the same people over and over, you ain't said, you, if you got that mentality, that is not a reflection of the kingdom. It's because you are so caught up in self. But Jesus was not selfish. He was selfless. Go with me real quick into Philippians chapter two. Philippians, chapter two, verses five through eight. Philippians, chapter two, verses five through eight. I want you to just notice what the Bible says. The Bible says, and C V, the Bible says, and think the same way that Jesus, uh, Jesus through Christ was truly God. But he did not try to remain equal with God. Instead, he gave up everything and became a slave. When he became like one of us, Christ was humble. He obeyed God, even died on a cross. Now, y'all need to pay, y'all, we really need, I know we pay, we read it many a time, but I need you to really understand what he, what just happened. Jesus was selfless. Then even though he was God, and he, see God, see Jesus was a hundred percent man, a hundred percent God at the same time. He wanted stuff you drink. He want half and half. He was a hundred percent God, a hundred percent man, all at the same time. And the Bible says that although he was God, the Bible says, he humbled himself and became a slave. All because he was thinking about somebody like you and I. And the Bible says, he got on a cross. And if you read the narrative of Jesus on the cross, the Bible says, he was hanging on the cross for six hours. He was willing to die to sacrifice, to give up his life because he was selfless. Question tonight, do your character reveal you to be a selfish person or a selfless person? Because it's kingdom. Watch, watch what else I wanna show you. Go to Second Corinthians, chapter eight. Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verses one through nine. Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verses one through nine. I read from the C E V version of the word of God. So watch this. Remember, ungodly qualities, stinginess. You know folk who just sting, they don't wanna help nobody? Oh, they don't wanna give to the Lord, they don't wanna give no tithe, they don't give no offering. It's all about them. You know why? Stingy. How you gonna be stingy with God's money? How you not gonna, how you not gonna help with God, when it's God? So, so when you evaluate yourself in parts of the kingdom, the question is, have you surrendered? Have you surrendered tonight, uh, you feel like what is yours is yours? Amen. You don't believe in helping nobody. It's all about you. You always trying to figure out what can you get out of, out of everything. Wanna show you something. Look, look at Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verse one through nine. Now, now, when you looking at this, this text, I want you to know uh, from a contextual perspective, this is not talking about ties and offerings in the way we understand it. In Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verses one through nine, this was a special offering for poor saints. This was, this was, this was an offering for people who was poor Christians. And this was a special project. It's a special offering. It was something extra that there was asking uh for the church to do on behalf of somebody else. I want you to notice something. Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verses one through nine, the Bible says, my friends, we want you to know that the churches in Macedonia have shown others how kind God is. Although they were going through hard times and was very poor, they were, they were glad to give generously. So notice what happens. They was, they was poor, I mean, they was poor themselves. But the Bible says, although they didn't have a lot, they still gave generously. They gave as much as they could afford and even more. Right? So this was a special offering. They gave more than what they had. Bless the name of Jesus. As, as much as they could afford, even more, simply because they wanted to. They even asked and begged us to let them have the joy of giving their money for God's people. And they did more than we hoped. Watch this. They gave themselves first to who? The Lord. They gave themselves to the king first. And then to us, those are the apostles, the leaders, just as God wanted them to do. Watch this. Titus was one who got you started doing this good thing. So we beg, beg him to have you finish what you begun. You do everything better than anyone else. You have stronger faith. You speak better than, than, uh, better and no more. You are eager to give and you love us better. Notice this. Now you must give more generously than anyone else. I'm not ordering you to do this. I'm simply testing how real your love is by comparing it with the concern that others have shown. Do you see that? The Bible says, you know that our Lord Jesus Christ was kind enough to give up all his riches. He left heaven. And the Bible says that he left, he give all, and became poor so that you could become rich. Do you see that? Selfish, selfless. In other words, in kingdom, in kingdom, we don't, we don't, we don't, we're not afraid to give to God. When in the kingdom, amen, we're not, we're not trying to, amen, keep all, we're trying to help other folk because we're part of the kingdom. Bless the name of Jesus. Uh, as Ronald Newsom said on Sunday, we not catfish give. Just get anything. Amen. We, we are part of the kingdom of God. And we believe God is such a way that God gonna take, remember, you don't own anything. You are only a steward of what belongs to the king. And sounds like God, what he's trying to do, he wants to see how you and I, child of God, how we, how we, how we are tested by our hearts in relation to being a kingdom giver. Now, 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 watch this. I want, I, I'm trying to get done, but I wanna show you this. Watch, watch, uh, First Peter, chapter two. First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty three. I wanna read it from the New Living Translation. First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty three. And I just wanna show you um how, how, how God, how he was willing to yield. He was willing to yield. That willing to yield means to give up your right. It's to forfeit your right. Ain't gotta be your way. Ain't gotta be how you wanna see it. You're forfeiting that right. Bless the name of you. You're forfeiting what you have a right to do. You forfeit. You know, uh, sometimes when people do you wrong, amen, you feel like it's alright for you to do them bad how they treated you. I'm gonna treat you like you treat me. Well, if you don't speak to me, guess what? The next time I see you, I ain't gonna speak to you. You know how we do, amen. You act like you don't see him when you walk in. They didn't speak to you last time. You act like you don't see him. You do something else. You act like you on the telephone. Amen. Uh, but I wanna show you, I wanna show you that sometimes in the kingdom, you gotta, well, all the time in the king, you gotta be willing to yield. You ain't always gotta have the last say. Every hill ain't worth dying on. Bless the name of Jesus. Watch this. Uh, in, uh, in, uh, Second Peter, First Peter rather, verse, chapter two, verse twenty three. Notice what he says. He says, he did not retaliate when he was insulted. Tell my Jesus. Jesus, your king, he, when he was insulted, he didn't retaliate, nor threaten revenge when he suffered. He didn't say, I'm gonna get you, y'all. He didn't say, you know how we do, we do it on religious, spiritual retaliations. You know, God, I'm gonna pray for you, you know, that type of thing, you know, when we really mean, God gonna get you. He said, I didn't, I didn't threaten. He left his case in the hands of God, who always judged fairly. In other words, I don't have to seek retaliation. I'm willing to yield. I died on a cross because I recognize the people that's doing it to me. They don't know what they doing. They know not what they do. And I'm, I'm leaving the case in the hands of God. Can you surrender tonight? Or what have you this week alone, Monday and Tuesday, even today? What have you not yielded to? What conversations have you had with other individuals and you just had to have the last word? What, what is it? What is it that, that, that you, it just gotta go your way? Why is it that it can't do, do it another way? What is it that's causing you to fight? Because in the kingdom, subjects learn how to yield. Bless the name. Can I show you one more and I'm done? I, I don't wanna carry this on to next week, cause this is the last one. It's your conduct. And I promise I'm done after this. It's your conduct. So, so watch this. It's, it's, it's your character. You surrender your character. You surrender your, uh, your, you surrender your conversation. But lastly, you could, you surrender your conduct. Your conduct got everything to do with your finances, your career goals, and your Your conduct got everything to do with your finances, your career goals and your relationships. You get that? That's your conduct, that's how, that's how you, that's how you behave. It has everything to do with your finances, your career goals and your relationships. Say it one more time, preacher, conduct, your finances, your career goals and your relationships, you surrender it all to your King. Now watch this, in Matthew chapter six, verse number thirty-one through thirty-three, I love how the C E V reads this. Matthew chapter six, thirty-one through thirty-three, uh, watch what it says, don't worry and ask yourself, will we have anything to eat? Will we have anything to drink, will we have any clothes to wear? Watch this, only people who don't know God are always worried about such things. Do y'all see that? He says, your Father in heaven knows that you need all these things. But, uh, but more than anything else, put God's work first and do what he wants. Then the other things will be yours as well. Do you not know this is your antidote to your, to your life in the kingdom? He says, your conduct ought to reflect the kingdom. He says, don't worry about anything, don't worry about it, but put God's work first. And if you put God's work first, what I do, I make sure you have, you'll never lack anything you need. Now, if I had time, I would tell you, there's a difference between a need and a want. If I had time, I ain't got time, but I tell you, a need is anything that's necessary for your empowerment, your enrichment and your development. That's your need, that's a need. Versus a want, you just wanted to have, and let me say it again, cause a lot of y'all missed it, a need, necessary, empowerment, enrichment and development. If it's a need, the question becomes, is it necessary for your empowerment and your development? It's not if necessary for your empowerment, your enrichment and development, it ain't a need. It's just a want, but he says, if you and I make a decision that we gonna put God's work first, since I'll take care of you. How many of you have really tried God in that? How many of you have surrendered to the Lord in the fact that God, if things are, are happening in my life, that if I put your work on the back burner, you know, sometimes, and see, in kingdom, when you in the kingdom, you can, how you gonna take a break on God? How you gonna say, I got too much going on, I can't tend to the work, it's because of your mentality of kingdom, you can't break on God? Not in a kingdom. Now, if you, uh, it was about you, you ain't gotta surrender, if you ain't ready, if, if it was about you and what you want, but when you have surrendered to the King, it's about him. Notice what it says in first Timothy chapter six. First Timothy chapter six, verse number seventeen, uh, watch what it says. Warn the rich people of this world not to be proud or trust in wealth in, that's easily lost. Tell them to have faith in God, who is rich and bless us with everything we need to enjoy life. I believe the King. Now listen, nothing wrong with being rich. Amen, bless the name of Jesus, I pray sparks prosperity for a lot of people, nothing wrong with being rich. The problem becomes you have fallen in love with the wealth. Do you not know there are people who have fallen in love with money to the point they have no time for God? They have no time for the King that they say that they are subject to? Ecclesiastes chapter five, verse number ten, it says, if you love money and wealth, you will never be satisfied with what you have. That doesn't make sense either. See, if you love wealth, you ain't never, if you love money, if you're a lover of money, bless the name, you will never be satisfied, it's always gonna be something that you want more because you have fallen, falling in love with riches. Nothing wrong with being rich. But now you have allowed yourself to fall in love with a dollar. Watch this, watch this, so, so watch this, it's, that's my finances, right? That's my finances, I need to, to, to submit, but also even when it comes to my career, when it comes to, when it comes to my finances and my career goals, I submit myself to it. But not only that, but what about, what about relationships? And I'm done with those relationships. I, I surrender. And when I surrender, it literally means the people that I am friends with, the people that you're dating, have you surrendered your relationships to, to the King? Because when you give those things over to the King, those people won't be in your life if they won't benefit you in your, on your journey to heaven. Okay, let me show you this real quickly and I'm almost done, I promise. Um, look at Psalms one nineteen, my verses nine through eleven, Psalms one nineteen, nine through eleven. It reads like this, how can a young man keep his way pure? By, by guarding it according to your word, now watch this, how can a young man keep his way pure? By guarding himself according to the word, in other words, the word is a part of the man's life. Now, if you a man and you looking for one, why would I date you and the word is not a part of your everyday itinerary? You don't even have, she doesn't even, she doesn't even care for the word. Cause here's the thing, when you, when, when there's a disconnect with God, there's a disconnect in everything else. I, I double dog dare you to try this, when the, when the person that you are in a relationship with was a friend or significant other, if there's a disconnect with God, there's a disconnect with y'all. Edward, just try, the only way that's not happen is, is, if, if, the only way that's not true, if you gotta disconnect with God. But when you are connected to God and you saw, you surrender to God, it becomes, it becomes to a point where there is a battle in the relationship. Why? Because there's a disconnect to God, he says, how can a young man keep his way pure? By guarding it according to the word. Uh, watch this last one, proverb chapter eleven and verse number twenty-two, proverb eleven, twenty-two, I like this amplified version, I love it. It says, as a ring of gold in a, in a, in a swine snout, a pig's snout, so is a beautiful woman who is without discretion. Her lack of character marks her beauty. I'm gonna read it one more time. As a ring of gold is in a swine's snout, snout, in other words, you see, you see, just imagine a gold ring in a pig's nostrils, right? So is a beautiful woman who is without discretion, meaning she does, she lacks character. She lacks the stuff that we talked about. Now, she's beautiful, but she's just like that pig with that gold around in her nose. She's beautiful, but her lack of character marks her beauty. I, I want you to, I want you, what are you saying? I'm saying you got to surrender your conduct, that's your finance, your career goals, there's a relationship, you surrender it to the King. And so tonight, this is what I, this is why I want you to get, the things in your life that you invest energy into, do they benefit your walk with God? I want you to ask yourself, the person that's in my life, friends, significant others, the, 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 the careers that I've chosen, those things, do the stuff I put all this energy into, do they benefit your walk with God? By me being your friend, how does that benefit my walk with the Lord? I, I, what are you saying? I'm saying it's time for us to surrender. To make up in my mind, our minds, to say, God, I surrender all. I surrender, and so, I wanted to lay this foundation tonight on Wednesday to show you where we're going, we're talking about us self inventory, looking at ourselves, asking ourselves, have, is it time, it's time for us to surrender. What is it in your life that you have not yet surrendered to? Is it your conversation, is it your conduct, is it, is it, is it, is your characteristics, your character? What is it in your life that you have said, God, you can have this, but you can't have that? I still, you know how we do it, this is just me, you just gotta live with it, you gotta live, no, you really gotta get that up in the kingdom. You can't be you and stay, and be in the kingdom, you, you gotta learn how to give you up. But it's so hard to give us up when we're so youth to, to having a watered down word. So you read scripture and it's watered down because you read what's only, what's beneficial for you. If you study scripture just to see what you can get, see how it's gonna bless you in reference to your everyday life, but not looking at you as an individual, you're studying it wrong. See, scripture ain't for you to get a quick fix. It's not a book that you can go to just to find out how you gonna get all your blessings and how I can get out of this storm and I can get out of it. No, the word is there to cut you so for you to look in the mirror and act yourself. Have I yet surrendered to the cross of Calvary? And I don't know about anybody else, but Jesus done too much for us. He died on a old rugged cross for my sins and yours, and for us not to surrender. We not giving a watered down word. I want the word in its entirety. I want the word when he, when it cut me and when it, I want the word because when I get the word in me, it helps me to look myself in the mirror and say, God, none of me and all of you, can that be your prayer tonight? Before you lay down asleep, stop saying that prayer, less of God and, uh, less of me and more of God, no. Change your prayer, none of me and all of God. Because in the kingdom, I'm, I'm gonna show you through this series, when you truly surrender, when you truly surrender, life doesn't mean it's not gonna have no storms, but it's a peace of mind that you have. Man, do anybody know what I'm talking about? It's, it's when, man, you can be broke and not have a dollar to your name, but you still can smile and say, I know God gonna make a way somehow. Man, I'm talking about that type of peace, I'm talking about, man, things may not be going everywhere, but man, it's a joy that God gives you. But you get that because you are in a kingdom that you already recognize Yahweh God. Yahweh, you know who he is. And you say, God, I don't know what you doing, but you up to something, that's why every now and then, when I'm in a, between a, a, a place and a, 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 a tight spot, I say, God, I don't know what you doing, but you up to something. But let's see, God, let's see what you up to. Let's see, because I've come to, you brought me too far for me to walk out on you now. You done, you done did too much, and somebody tonight discouraged, somebody tonight feel like you can't do it, my question to you tonight, have you surrendered yet? I ain't talking about partially surrender, I ain't talking about the stuff that you wanna surrender, I'm talking about the stuff that you don't wanna give up, but you give up because you say, God, I love you more than I love it, I love you, Yahweh God, I love you more. And when you understand that, God can do some things in your life, and we gonna build on this foundation, we'll continue on Sunday, we'll come back next Wednesday and we're gonna build because we want folks to surrender, we want, we want, I want to, I want to encourage every person on here tonight to invite somebody on, on here next Wednesday, I want you to invite somebody who's have not yet surrendered, who's not a child of God, who's not a Christian. I want you to invite them on back on here and tell them that they, that you wanna, them to hear a message about how they need to surrender. You gonna always struggle until you surrender, you can't keep fighting God and expect to come out. Okay, no, you have to stop fighting. You gotta surrender to God, when I surrender, I say, God, I got it. I can't do it no more, I tried everything on my own, I tried everything else, God, I'm surrendering. And that's what we wanna do tonight. Uh, anybody have any questions tonight, any questions tonight as we close, any question? Any question? Any questions?